You're welcome. Well, we're running a couple of minutes behind, so I thought, no, let's get going. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, to those in person and for those who are watching us live streaming. I will now ask our Board Secretary to establish a quorum for the record.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Aguilar?
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I will have our student representative, Ms. Priscilla Barajas, from Renaissance lead us in the pledge.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Priscilla. For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms here by our Board Secretary. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda regarding Item 3.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Board approved by a 5-0 vote, a settlement and full release in a workers' compensation case number 18735323. On Item 3.2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, the Board voted 4-0 with Mr. Miller absent to approve a settlement and release agreement with Century Villages at Cabrillo. We will now adopt the agenda. Are there any changes? Do we have a motion?
移動
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? And our student board member with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, we will welcome Priscilla back to the microphone. Priscilla Barajas from Renaissance. Thank you for being here and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education, Senior Team, and Superintendent Dr. Baker. Hello, my name is Priscilla Barajas. I first want to say what a privilege it is to be speaking in front of you today and for your service to the community and our schools. I hope you enjoy hearing about what Renaissance has been up to. And, yep. I am the Associated Student Body President within the Visual Arts and Performing Arts Pathways at Renaissance High School for the Arts. I also serve as the Secretary for Yearbook Club and Treasurer for Zine Club, our school's magazine publisher. I have served with ASB for two years and have the honor of being president this year. Renaissance is an inclusive artist community. You can always count on hearing beautiful music throughout the halls with covered pieces of art that encompass the creative, the creativity of each and every student at our school. This summer, we partnered with an organization called Long Beach Walls. Long Beach Walls together with our student painted, students painted outside of multiple buildings on campus with brand-new murals. And since then, they have been featured in multiple community events and students and staff have enjoyed seeing them every day. In September, we held our annual Club Rush event. Club Rush is an event in which students are able to mix and mingle with all the clubs offered on campus. This year, we have a total of 29 clubs to offer, which is the most we've ever had. Some of our notable clubs are the Advanced Drama Club, Dance Club, Guitar Club, Korean Music Club, Red Club, Black Student Union Crochet Club, Leadership Academy, the Improvans, and Alianza Estudiantil. Alianza had the opportunity to host our first-ever Familia Night on October 13th. La Familia Night was a hit. Students and community members were able to enjoy homemade tacos, cumbia dance lessons with a professional dance instructor, agua frescas, lotería, and face painting. The students also worked to make traditional papel picado, which were used to decorate our quad. Earlier that day, ASB hosted our second annual Future Fest. Future Fest invited 19 industry professionals to our artist school. Some of our students' favorite speakers were Shannon Flynn, who brought her Emmy for all of us to see, David Balthor, a music producer who has worked closely with the industry professionals such as Beyoncé, Dr. Dre, and Kendrick Lamar, and Daniel Toledo, an artist who painted one of our wonderful murals at our school. On October 6th, Renaissance High School welcomed California poet laureate Lee Herrick to campus for a book signing and poetry reading. He spoke along two other well-established authors and with four of our very own phoenixes. At the end of the event, our student poets were able to sign a published copy of their own poetry to give to their fellow students. It was an honor to host such a successful author, to host such successful authors in our Performing Arts Center. Jill Baker graciously attended and was able to see our amazing scholars thrive within the realm of poetry. While all of these wonderful events were taking place, our students were, of course, participating in multiple performances. Our Cabaret Night sold out in our theater and featured various student performers. Open Mic was hosted by Writers Guild and allowed students to share poetry, creative writing, and other writings with a larger peer audience. Then our Chamber Choir participated in the Bob Cole Invitational Festival out Cal State Long Beach. Finally, tonight is our first improv show of the year hosted by the Improvans troupe, Break-A-Leg Space Invaders. I also want to mention our amazing seniors. Last year, they improved our math and ELA ESPEK scores by 50% from the previous year. Due to their hard work, they all received free lunch last Friday from Roll It Up Tequitos. Thank you, Dr. Camarino, for supporting that event. It made the seniors feel recognized for all their hard work and allowed our current juniors to see how their hard work can pay off in the future. Yesterday was the best day at Renaissance for Halloween. Halloween is a big deal at our small school. At Renaissance, students are already very expressive with their fashion identities. So, on Halloween, the students really shine. At Halloween Fest, 23 of our clubs on campus were able to sell items ranging from homemade crochet items to Vietnamese-shaped eyes. As always, the haunted house maze, this year's theme was haunted caverns, hosted by our Performing Arts Club was super popular and scared students and staff alike. ASB was able to host their first-ever Halloween dance in the theater. Stage crew classes helped ASB immensely by providing spooky lighting and fog machines. Since the start of the year, ASB has hosted a school-wide class competition called the Phoenix Cup. Our ASB team worked together to build a five-foot trophy, which the winning class at the end of the year will receive. Our artists love a healthy competition on campus. We are looking forward to many events throughout the rest of the year. ASB plans to return to Belmont Shore for the Christmas parade, students from our Performing Arts Pathway, as well as singers. Winter formal and prom are right on the horizon. Renaissance High School for the Arts is celebrating our 20th anniversary this school year as well. We plan to host alumni and community members at our annual open house, happening on April 12th. ASB is excited to lead all our phoenixes through the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Are there people here you'd like to acknowledge, people who are supporting you?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge my wonderful principal, Mr. Navia, and Ms. Van Connes, the new ASB teacher this year. They've both been very wonderful in helping us all thrive, so, yeah.
Great. Do we have any question, oh, did you have a question? No? Oh, okay. So, did you mention if you were a junior or senior?
Oh, I'm a senior this year.
A senior, oh, okay. Our follow-up question is always, what are your plans for next year?
I plan to go into biomedical engineering at CSDOB.
Okay. Well, thank you for, those are big plans. Those are really big plans. And I think, I think you caught us off-guard because we didn't expect that out of a Renaissance student. But you know what? Back in the days when, you did, yeah, okay. Back in the days when we had the API, the, the top performing school in the district was CAMHS, which, that probably doesn't surprise anybody. The next top performing school was Renaissance. So, that, that-
99.9% graduation rate, 99% going to college, President Craighead?
You know what? Renaissance is doing all right. Doing all right. So, we, yeah, we, we support our, our creative students and we know that being creative isn't exclusive to being very intelligent as well. So, thank you for representing Renaissance so well. And also, I think we need to do a picture, right? So, we're going to have you come up and, and join us for a photo.
Kristi oversees our GATE program and will provide an overview of our rigorous GATE certification process and recognition of our nine teachers that recently completed the process.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Good evening, President Craighead, Board members, executive staff, Superintendent Baker, again, Dr. Lund, colleagues and community. I'm very honored to be here tonight to present the certificates for our GATE teachers. They've worked so hard. It's such a rigorous process. I wanted to share with you just a little bit of detail. They have to complete a minimum of 45 hours of professional development coursework. Most of them end up doing more with the conferences and things that they end up attending. They join a cohort where they do a lot of collaboration and peer feedback, and then they build their portfolio, which they develop through research, strategies. They have differentiated lessons and reflection that they, they go through to complete that portfolio, excuse me. And so, throughout that process, they looked at best practices based on culturally relevant and responsive learning that included intense learning cycles, lesson design. Student profiles were looked at deeply so they could create individualized and personalized lessons to meet the needs of all of their students. Their students that come into their rooms are so engaged and enjoy being there every day. Through their collaboration and peer feedback, they gave critique. They were observed in their classrooms and they refined their lessons. And the impact has just been really strong with the teachers and with the students. Their lessons always align to the content standards. They look at the GATE standards and they just build on their students' assets and providing challenges for those gifted and advanced learners. But not just them, but just for all of the students. So, tonight, I have some of the teachers here with me and they're going to come up when I call their names. And I do want to say that they've really been dedicated and devoted to the process and really have a passion for growing as professionals. It's really an impressive journey to go through with them. So, when I call your names, teachers, if you would please come up and get your certificates. I have, from Franklin, Eden Ammons.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. From Cleveland, Ashley McCraw Harrison. From Adams, Courtney English. From Bertram, Holly Martinez. From Twain, Miranda Alfred. From Grant, Mavi Wilson. That was for her daughter at home. And we have three teachers that really wanted to be here but just could not be here. So, I just wanted to honor them. From Cabrillo, Jamie Biassi. From Madison, Macy McDaniel, Mary McDaniel, sorry. And from Madison also, Natalie Venosi. And I just want to thank my OCIPD colleagues for being very supportive of the GATE office. And I want to give a special thank you to Gerlin Montiel. David Echeverria and Carol Torres, who have really worked hard to build the GATE office the past few years and help these teachers with their journey. And I really hope you get the opportunity to visit with them one day in their classrooms. So, thank you very much.
Well, we are so proud of you going above and beyond. But we would like to take a photo, so a little opportunity to do a photo. That should have been an "and" not a "but." So, come on up here, our new GATE teachers. Congratulations again. And you're, you're welcome to join us or maybe you'd like to celebrate. We understand. It's a school night, yes. I'm, I'm sure there are papers to grade or, yeah. I'm, I'm sure they, they can find things to do. Let's see, where are we? Oh, yes, okay. We have a video. So, we will go to our video.
So, J-Rob News is a news broadcast, our school's news broadcast.
I have seventh and eighth graders that are in it and they're the ones that are actually coming up with the ideas, putting it together and editing everything. It gives them a lot of confidence in what they're doing. Not only that, but the kids themselves that are involved with the J-Rob News, it gives them a sense of responsibility.
It helps me build up the confidence to believe in myself and to trust myself in everything. So, I feel like that contributes to, like, daily life.
It helps me uplift my voice by really, like, exploring and, like, talking to others. It helps me, like, really feel a sense of responsibility and it helps me, like, speak out more.
I talk a lot. I used to get in trouble for my teachers in, like, elementary school and they would write on my report card to my dad, talks a lot. Talking a lot is a positive for me because it helps me to interview the students who are, like, shy or, like, very outward towards people.
To me, it's just, it's real-life application.
I feel like I really do want people to see that the J-Rob News is not just a very simple thing that we just throw together. It's really dedication and we have to work for it.
We're very hardworking for what we do and the J-Rob News.
So, that's very impressive. That's Robinson Elementary, right? That's not K-8 or, oh, K-8. So, it is K-8. I'm guessing maybe those, some of those were middle, middle, because they seem pretty mature for, yeah, for elementary kids, so, middle, okay. That makes more sense. Still, though, very impressive. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public testimony. Well, we have no one to speak on public testimony listed on the agenda. But for items not listed on the agenda, we have several people. So, comments on an item not listed for discussion today must be about issues that are within the jurisdiction of the Board. Please note that due to California law, we, the Board, cannot enter into a discussion on any items not listed on the agenda. Board members or staff may ask clarifying questions or provide clarification regarding public comments, but such discussion is limited. Each speaker will be provided up to three minutes. And we have the time on the screen so that you can keep track as well. And first up, we have Greg West.
Good evening. I'm here to ask the Board to remove the district's transgender policy that allows students to request their school to change their name to one of the opposite sex, to change their pronoun to the opposite sex, to have access to bathrooms and changing facilities of the opposite sex, all without permission or knowledge from the parents. You're violating the rights of the parents to be involved in this critical health issue of their children. Aside from this, you're also putting your district in danger of a major legal battle. Let me give you a few examples. In August, the Spreckles Union School District in Monterey County settled a lawsuit by agreeing to pay $100,000 for convincing an 11-year-old student to identify as bisexual and later as transgender without informing her parents. Then in September, US District Judge Roger Bennettts blocked the Escondido School District's transgender student policy that was hiding this information about students' gender initiatives and identities from their parents, just like the Long Beach does now. And then just this October, 20-year-old Isabella Ayala started a lawsuit against her doctors, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics, for pushing and conducting a gender-affirming medicalization on her as a child. This transitioning process started when she was 14 years old. Ayala was convinced by doctors to start testosterone and hormone therapy to begin transitioning as a boy. Ayala later made an unsuccessful suicide attempt after six months of treatment. Ayala's lawsuit is the latest in a growing list of detransitioning young adults suing medical clinics, doctors, and other groups for gross malpractice and pushing experimental gender treatments. It's easy to see the legal system is ruling in favor of protecting minors and keeping parents informed. So, in conclusion, I would also ask the Board to remove their current transgender policy and replace it with a policy that would require schools to notify parents if they become aware of students wanting to change their genders and in order to provide the necessary parental involvement to keep their children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hannah Fielder. Hannah Fielder?
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, and district leaders. First off, I would like to thank you for your time and allowing me to have this opportunity to speak here today at this Board meeting. I am Hannah Audrey Fielder, currently a senior at Lakewood High School and a part of the Merit Scholars Pathway. I am also a 4.3 weighted GPA student who has managed to take 11 APs and honors classes during my time at Lakewood High. Lakewood is a school that pushes their students to make a positive impact in not only the school nor their community, but to create an impact in the world during and post-high school. Due to these values and how the school pushes their students to voice their opinions, I consider myself fortunate enough to have this opportunity to speak today because of these values. As of recent discussion, it has been announced on October 4th that white gowns will only be handed to the valedictorians at our school. Tradition is valued at Lakewood and the tradition has always been, people who have a 4.0 weighted GPA are allowed to wear white gowns. A majority of my family members have attended Lakewood High and met that requirement of a 4.0 and above weighted, despite them having an unweighted GPA that didn't hit that 4.0 mark, and they graduated in white. I too have been told since my freshman year of high school that I will be able to graduate in white just as long as I maintain my 4.0 weighted GPA. With the most recent decision discussing gowns, I believe it is unfair that this policy has been implemented at the start of the school year to all graduating classes, but specifically to the senior class. I have gathered opinions from fellow peers within my school and they have said if this policy was instilled last year, then they wouldn't have chosen to take the rigorous classes they decided to take. I understand this policy has been applied to other high schools such as Wilson and Milliken and with this new decision for other high schools to follow suit. However, I want to request consideration into implementing this policy for the class of 2027 and allowing for people in the class of 2024 who have received weighted 4.0s and above to wear white gowns. And hopefully for this policy to adhere towards the class of 2025 and 2026 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Caitlin.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, and district leaders. My name is Caitlin Riley Joyce and I'm a senior at Lakewood High School in the Merit Scholars Pathway. I would like to thank you for your time and allowing me to speak here today. The Merit Scholars Pathway is a program designated for students to take opportunities to explore career choices, as well as take a rigorous course load that will prepare them for a four-year university. Recently, Lakewood has announced the news that the Merit Program will be closed for the incoming freshman class and classes to follow. This, this policy has been mentioned previously and we have had time to ponder upon it and process it. I believe that this same, this same notion should be considered for the white robe policy. The change of the policy that only students with a 4.0 unweighted GPA would be allowed to graduate with a special gown instead of a previously 4.0 weighted GPA was announced on October 4th publicly to Lakewood students in the beginning of our senior year. This- This is after three entire years of students taking rigorous courses that challenge us and allow us to explore opportunities within our school and take classes. I, myself, have taken 10 AP courses at Lakewood and have gained a 4.83 weighted GPA and a 4.0 unweighted GPA. Although this policy would still allow me to graduate in white with my peers, who have had the same dream as me in the past three years, are being faced with the impact of this policy change. I believe that in the three years I have spent taking classes to complete my academic goals were for the notion to be able to walk across that stage wearing a white robe with my peers, who have done the same and have been through the same rigorous courses that I have. I also believe that it is unfair that students who have taken regular classes all throughout high school and received As should have received a higher honor than those who have taken APs and honors and may not have performed the best academically, but have dipped their toes in coursework that allows them to explore their career interests and learn how to manage a large course load. I would like to ask that instead of reversing this policy that it is implemented for the freshman class, class of 2027, and following years, and allow the current sophomores, juniors, and seniors who have picked their schedules and classes based on the dream of graduating with white and walk across the stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sophia Gibson.
Hello, I am Sophia Gibson, a senior at Lakewood High School. Some of you may recognize me. As just two months ago, I stood at the same podium to celebrate my accomplishments that earned me a spot as a finalist for the Student Board Member position. I'm here today to talk about a decision that the board has made that has taken away a prominent aspect of my and many other Lakewood seniors' up-and-coming graduation that would honor our accomplishments at Lakewood High School. Up until about a month ago, I was preparing to graduate in white, an honorable gown that recognizes my high academic performance the past four years. I even canceled my senior portrait with a school photographer because he only had provided red gowns, and for the photos, I was not graduating in red. This was until I learned about this change to Lakewood's longstanding cap-and-gown color policy. I hope this anecdote will convey how meaningful and symbolic the white gown is to not just me, but the large population of students at my school. In a few short months, I and many other students will walk across the stage, but not in the colored gown we have been dreaming of for the past four years. And not because of anything we have done, but because of a decision that has been made and implemented without any notice. I want to be clear. I fully understand and even support the desire to adjust the distinguished cap-and-gown policy to be consistent throughout the district, but that is not the issue here. The issue is proper notice when a change of this magnitude is made. I feel as though we have been blindsided and robbed of something that has been promised for four years prior if we met the requirements. If the district finds it necessary to have a consistent distinguished cap-and-gown policy, I implore you to consider the students who have been relying on a longstanding policy with a dream of graduating in white. Students deserve to understand these requirements their full four years in high school, so they understand what they are working for, what they have earned, and how they will actually be honored and recognized when they graduate. Alerting students who are already in high school, let alone seniors, that a graduation policy is changing is not sufficient notice. A more appropriate way to implement such a change that would minimize the negative impact on anyone would be to implement it for the incoming freshmen, so they have the privilege of knowing what requirements are while meeting those requirements is still within their control. They might make different choices about the rigor of coursework or extracurricular activities to ensure graduation in a white gown, a privilege we didn't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sheila.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Gibson, and I am the parent of Sophia, whom you'd heard from, and also my son, who graduated from McBride High School last year. So I'm familiar with the differences in the cap-and-gown color policy among LBUUSD schools. It never phased me. Both policies were abundantly clear. When my daughter first brought this issue to me, I was, of course, very sad for her, as I knew this was something she has talked about and been working towards since she attended Lakewood's graduation in 2021 to celebrate a friend of ours. I reflected on why this policy bothered me so much. I mean, there's certainly other ways to distinguish high honors, and they all make sense. And as I thought about it further, I was reminded of a legal concept that seeks to assure equity in contracts called detrimental reliance. Briefly, under detrimental reliance, a party may be obligated by a promise when he or she had known that the promise would induce the other party to rely to his detriment, and the other party was reasonable in relying. I would argue that many of the extremely talented students who've heard from today and who you will hear from have indeed detrimentally relied on Lakewood's longstanding cap-and-gown color policy when making decisions over the past three and a half years. Decisions about the rigor of coursework, participating in extracurricular activities, or foregoing an extra credit assignment because they believe they would still be able to graduate in the distinguished white gown. I would also argue it was reasonable for them to rely on a longstanding policy. And they have detrimentally relied on this promise that you now seek to change in the 11th hour when there is nothing any of them can do to change or control their outcome. Should the board wish to standardize the cap-and-gown policy across all LBUSD schools, and I feel compelled to point out that I believe it may have unintended negative consequences that I have alluded to and that you've heard from the other students, such as participation in extracurricular activities or taking AP and honors courses. But should the board feel it necessary to make this change, students must be afforded full notice to make decisions over the course of their four years that will allow them to meet their goals, whatever these goals may be, or at least make reaching their goals within their control. I would like to ask that we continue this conversation so that these students can be fully heard beyond their three-minute allotment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Diana Sanchez.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Baker, and Madam Chair, Craig Head. My name is Diana Sanchez, and I am a concerned Lakewood High School parent here to advocate for our students. My son is a Lakewood High School senior who is affected by the recently, as spoken previously, the attire policy change recently released by the Office of High Schools here at Long Beach Unified. The original policy has required that only those who met strict academic criteria may wear distinguished white robes at graduation. In the past, those who achieved a 4.0 weighted GPA have qualified. Only recently has the criteria been revised to reflect unweighted GPA at 4.0. Basically, all As in four years to wear white. Herein lies the problem. This policy has been rolled out in such a way that it has negatively impacted all those students that have been working towards the criteria and expectations set out at the beginning of their 9th grade year, four years. Essentially, the expectations and requirements communicated then has suddenly changed without an opportunity afforded these students to modify the outcome. We would like the support of this governing board and our superintendent to have the Office of High Schools hold off implementation of this new policy. The existing requirements should not be changed until the current 10th, 11th, and 12th graders have graduated under the original requirements. Thought must be given to ensure that our students are encouraged to continue taking AP courses. The boost AP courses give students GPA incentivizes enrollment. This further prepares our students for the rigors of college curriculum. If they feel the extra work, attention, and effort in taking these rigorous courses does not provide a reward, they will be less likely to take these courses, further declining enrollment in these exceptional educational opportunities. Universities, when students apply and are accepted, adhere to requirements for those students' graduations. Even after changes have been made, they only implement those for the students that are incoming to their school. They have worked very hard towards the end of their high school career, and the rug is being pulled from under them. The unprecedented effects of the COVID years have left irreparable damage to many students' psyche and emotional well-being. They are finally getting a sense of belonging and success after much adjustment. I appeal to your sense of duty and responsibility to our students' education and emotional well-being. Moreover, setting example of respectful implementation of changes to policy and the rules. Let's help make their high school experience end on a positive note. Thank you.
Next, we have Nicholas.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Nicholas Sanchez, and I am a senior at Lakewood High School. I have been working hard my entire high school career to guarantee that I was the ideal student, to guarantee that I was something proud for my family to see at graduation. My freshman year was online, I'd like to say that, and it was a very difficult time. I maybe didn't do my best, but that was what I could do with my resources. My following year, my sophomore year, I was encouraged to take AP classes by many of my teachers to guarantee that I would have my white robe when I graduated. In the past three years, I have taken a total of 10 weighted classes to guarantee my white robe and my above 4.0 weighted GPA. Recently, we have been informed that even with the GPA above 4.0, we will not be allowed to wear a white gown. I chose to take an extra four APs this year because I had the desire to learn and excel, but also partly because I wanted to guarantee that my GPA was above a 4.0 so that I could graduate in white like others did before me. I would appreciate if the policy would be postponed to the class of 2027. I asked for the class of 2027 because this is not just for the class of 2024. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors have been told previous years that we would have the option to remake our grades so that we could show our parents and our family the kind of students we are. It is very disappointing to see our hard work not be shown in our graduation and when our family sees what we've accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Baker, can you make a note of that?
Yeah, absolutely. This is something that Dr. Camarena and I will follow up on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to reports on superintendent advisory groups, and we'll start with the business, budget, and policy development. Dr. Benitez.
Yes, Madam President. So today, our group did not have any new policies to review or consider. We will have new policies for our review at our next board meeting, and then those will be available for the rest of our colleagues for that first December meeting. Just to reiterate, our process is that any new policies that are either codification of current practices or just updates as required by either state or federal guidelines, we would use this process. If there are any policies that are more substantial and require additional comments and review, that those would be provided to all of us ahead of time. Nothing to report on, other than we'll have some other policies for consideration at our first December meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have the Instruction and Student Learning Support's Ms. Lopez.
Hi. Just very briefly, we just really focused on two items, and that was the gate recognitions that we had earlier today. So we did have nine teachers who completed the rigorous gate certification process. And we also spoke about the Quality Core Instruction Training. Just roughly about 2,600 teachers have participated in the Quality Core Instruction Training in Round 1. And that's really all for the report.
Thank you. Work Force Development, Mr. Miller was with us earlier, but he wasn't feeling well. And so we have no report. Student Outcome Focused Governance. Do we have a report from that group? Oh, Mr. Otto.
Great. Yes, the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Group has been meeting, and today was a watershed day for us because what we did was we adopted goals and guardrails moving forward with this approach to student outcome-focused governance. And it's important enough that I think we should read them briefly so that the public watching this meeting and who listen to this meeting can understand where we're going. And so there are four goals. The goals are first, with regard to reading and reading proficiency. The goal states the percentage of Grade III students who meet or exceed grade-level standards on the State English Language and Arts SBAC, that's the name of a test, assessments will grow from 48% in June 2023 to 70% by June of 2028. That's our first goal. The second goal that we adopted also had to do with reading, but it had to do with reading acceleration. And that goal is that the percentage of students in grades 4 through 8 scoring at the quote "not met" end quote achievement level in the prior year who met the scale score growth target on the State SBAC English Language Arts Assessment will increase from 28% in June 2023 to 60% in June 28. That's in five years. The third goal has to do with algebra proficiency. And that goal is, in pursuit of having more than 80% of Black African-American students meet the Algebra AG requirement by the end of 9th grade, the proficiency gap between Black African-American students and all other students will decline from 5% in June 2023 to 0% by June 2028. And goal four, last goal, is for college and careers readiness. And that goal is that in pursuit of having more than 66% of Black African-Americans graduating seniors at the A through G level, the proficiency gap between Black African-American students and all other students will decline from 15% from June 2023 to 0% by June 2028. Those are the four goals that we've adopted. They basically will be those goals for five years. And then we also adopted three Board of Education guardrails, and they are, first, that the superintendent may not allow resources to be allocated without evidence of their equitable distribution aligned with the Excellence and Equity Board policy. Excuse me. Second, the superintendent may not allow major district-wide initiatives to go forth without engaging students of color and their families following stakeholder engagement principles that are utilizing current adopted best practices. And finally, the third guardrail is that the superintendent may not allow implementation or adoption of any classroom curriculum or programming that does not prioritize educational and racial equity. It's a lot. And we wanted to read them to you so that you understood that those are our goals. That's how we intend to proceed with these goals. I don't expect you to be able to repeat those at this particular time, but you need to become familiar with them because they will be the way that we're moving in the future, and it's a result of over three years of work of the board to get to this point. We want to thank the leadership of A.J. Crable, who was here today personally, is with the Council of Great City Schools. And we have now adopted the first step for what it takes to become a student-focused -- sorry, Student Outcomes Focused Governance Program, and we're very excited by this. So if you've got questions, if you've got things that you'd like to say, please feel free to contact us because we're very encouraged by the steps we've taken today.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Dr. Benitez?
Just a couple more things to build on Mr. Otto's great summary. So there will be more information to come on how we advance and measure progress on these goals. And if anyone is curious as to our conversation, we had a special meeting prior to our 5 o'clock meeting that was live-streamed and is available for viewing. You can also hear the goals there. I just echo my colleagues' sentiments around being thankful to our executive team, to all the community members and community stakeholders that really guided our conversations around what areas we should prioritize and develop goals around. And just congratulations to my colleagues
I just congratulations to my colleagues for the adoption of the goals today.
Thank you. Well, well said. It's something we've been working on for three years, and it's something that will direct our work going forward. So as A.J. told us today, it was um the last step in the beginning or the end of the beginning, and now we begin a different phase in that process to um positively impact student outcomes, and that was the whole reason for that work. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the consent calendar, and I believe um Yumi has something, a clarification to provide.
Couple, yeah, a couple of modifications. Um, under item fourteen point eight, the purchasing contracts report, we'd like to alert the board to a change in item number twenty-three. Um, the purpose, um, as stated, has changed from "to provide a leadership and team building program with the university tour for Jordan High School students." That language has um been changed to read "to provide rental facilities and meals for the RAP Leadership Camp." Um, and also for item number fourteen point one zero, Board Policy three five five three, School Nutrition Programs, we'd like to pull um that board policy for consideration this evening, and we'll bring it back on November fifteenth. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I will ask our...
I do have a question.
Can I, can I make a motion first, and then?
Yes.
Just want to check process, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, I move to approve consent calendar with um revisions as pointed out by Ms. Takahashi.
I need a second.
Say it.
And discussion, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, on item fourteen uh point eight, number three, the contract to provide recruitment, hiring, and onboarding to district staff. My question is, are we looking to hire additional district staff members? And if so, why, why aren't we doing it in-house?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So this is within our EduCare program. Uh, approximately one point five million dollars of the operating budget for EduCare comes from outside foundations that are donations to, uh, through our, our various foundations to fund the ongoing operations of the program. And so we need staff to do that. We had somebody in that position for a number of years. Um, she left the district in March. So in collaboration with United L.A., who is part, our partners in this work, um, we have brought on this consultant to help us hire the next um person who will help us with some of the fundraising work related to that one point five million dollar budget.
Thank you. Also, um, I know you just clarified, uh, once again, number uh fourteen point eight, number twenty-three. Uh, can you elaborate again on the contract with the United Church of Christ?
Yeah, so it's just, um, the purpose, as stated, um, has been amended. It's "to provide rental facilities and meals for the RAP Leadership Camp."
And then I do have another, one last question on fourteen point eight, number thirty-eight. Uh, can you please explain this contract with the Hernando School District for six hundred thousand?
Right, yeah, so this is um enabling us to um utilize another, um, bid from another agency um to, to buy these materials.
Um, any further discussion?
Actually, uh, yeah, one more. I'm fourteen, item fourteen point nine, the citizens' bond oversight. So I have a couple of questions there. First one is, how many members do we have in this committee? My second question is, um, given, given however many we have, can we add more? And then my third question is, where can the public go to get information if they're interested in being a part of this committee?
Perfect. I'll try and address all three here. So this is a seven-member Citizens Oversight Committee governed by Proposition Thirty-nine. So Proposition Thirty-nine basically governs the composition, the seats, the representative categories for each member that serves on these type of committees. Uh, while we have seven members, two of them had terms that just expired yesterday. Uh, one of them had a, a term that expired a few months back. So we had a total of three vacancies via this particular action. We're looking to fill two of the three. So we would still have one remaining vacancy going forward. Uh, we continue to advertise, and we'll continue to advertise going forward until that seat is filled via our bonds website. So LB School Bonds dot net, there's a toolbar at the top that identifies four different categories. One of them specifically reads Citizens Oversight Committee, and there's a link to our particular application, link to a um email address for particular questions that folks might have. That particular open vacancy is for what we deem the taxpayer organization or taxpayer association representative. Difficult one to fill, uh, but an important one to fill for this particular group. So customary for districts to have mem- a seven-member committee, is what I would say. And it's been difficult for us to recruit additional members, right? So we definitely want to put the word out. I'm glad I'm up here at the podium right now, speaking to this particular item and, and letting the community know about the particular website to go to as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda, and also I'd like to thank our um volunteers for stepping up to serve on this committee. We have Osvaldo Avila, he's a Webster dad, and Steve Davis, he's a Newcombe dad, and those are the two being considered. So any further discussion? Uh, in that case, I will ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Benitez?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
And Member Lopez?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, and then student board member preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes four zero.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda, we have new business, um, fifteen point one, um, initial bargaining proposals from the California School Employees Association, uh, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit A, to Long Beach Unified School District, and that's information only, so um, no motion needed. Uh, fifteen point two, initial bargaining proposals from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit B, to Long Beach Unified School District. Um, also, information, um, did we have any questions on either of those items? Ms. Lopez?
Yes, just a question on um how staff members and the public are being made aware that the copies of the bargaining proposal for CSEA and for, uh, and for TAO for that matter are available for review in the main offices of elementary, middle, and high schools. How are we informing the public about that?
I don't think it's informing the public. Mem- you ask about members, that comes through their association. They actually have a designated place at each school and, and work location where the information is placed. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Oh, I probably should have included fifteen point three, initial bargaining proposals from Long Beach Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit A and Unit B. Um, that would kind of uh go along with the other two. Any, any questions on that one? Okay. Um, fifteen point four, approval of pre-qualified program support service firms. And actually, would it be okay if I, I'm looking at our legal counsel, would it be okay if we take these as a group, or should we do them individually?
No, you can take them as a group, as long as when you make the motion, you make the motion to approve fifteen point four through fifteen point seven. That's fine.
Okay, I think I'd like to do it that way, since they're all um rather related. Dr. Benitez, did you have something?
I, I would move to approve, as advised by council, fifteen point four, fifteen point five, fifteen point six, fifteen point seven, if we can get um an explanation, some context from uh Mr. Miranda on each of those four items. Uh, if you can do it collectively, Mr. Miranda, since we're, um, since I'm making the motion to vote on them collectively, that would be great, if you could give us background and context.
Yes, sir.
You know what, we'll just, we'll just have a second so we can do, to get to the discussion part of it.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make the motion that would include all four, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. So this motion is for all four, but I need a second so we can get to the discussion.
Say it.
Thank you. Mr. Miranda.
Perfect. Yes, in the spirit of combining all four into one action, I'll describe all four collectively. Uh, first and foremost, and as you know, and ours, our community likely knows, we have a very large building program that spans a multi-billion dollar effort, which basically necessitates our need for specialized consultants, specialized service providers across a multitude of different categories. So what we have before is these particular four actions for labor compliance, commissioning, project inspection, and program support firms. These are basically the first four that we're bringing forward before the board for approval, and I say first four because there's an additional eight that will follow in the next couple of months, uh, being that we recently, uh, with voter support passed a new bond, we're ramping up our efforts on the building programs side of the house, and we predict that we're going to need specialized services across several projects. There are several firms out there really itching to do additional work with the district. Uh, we've advertised in trade journals and in local papers and on Planet bids. Uh, myself and Mr. Rising connect with a number of firms who pose questions with respect to how they can get in, get their foot in the door and to work with the district, uh, and this is it, right? So these particular professional services RFQs that we post are in fact those opportunities for folks and firms uh to do work with the district on various projects. This process is in fact a fair and competitive process, uh, as allowed by government code. So i- it's something we follow and something that helps us on the facility side of the house as well. Definitely helps us in terms of saving time, because the alternative is, for every particular project effort where I need an inspector, or need a testing firm, or need somebody to do labor compliance services, I would go back out to market and seek proposals for every one of those individual efforts, and that can be very cumbersome, can take quite a bit of time. These per, pre-qualified lists allow us to expedite those processes as well. Um, our intent is to refresh these particular pre-qualified list every three years going forward. In some cases, we've hit that mark, in a few cases, we've slipped a few years, yet going forward, we have a commitment um on our department's side of the house to refresh every three years, because things change. Sometimes there's a key partner or player with a particular firm that leaves said firm and goes elsewhere, and that could impact that firm's services. So we want to maintain that option to go back out to market. You probably noticed that each particular pre-qualified list varies in size, so some services are calling out for three to eight to sixteen different firms, and that's because we took a careful look and consideration in terms of wanting to have a deep enough bench for each professional service pool, yet also have enough work to go around for each of those service, service providers. Uh, we don't want somebody to land on the list only to sit there and not have quite a bit of work to do. So that's why they vary in size. Uh, we're happy to report that in total, there's thirty-five different companies on these four lists altogether, yet twelve of them are new to each respective list. So that it's, again, just a good sign that we went out to market, confirms our suspicion that there's folks that want to do additional work here as well. Lastly, uh, definitely a local factor that went into our rating system, so we have different raters within our department that look at every one of these proposals that come through, and while several of these companies have headquarters within the greater region, Orange County, L.A. area, and so forth, the workers by and large are, are here in our community, and that was an absolute factor in terms of us developing these shortlists, these recommended shortlist.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Um, any further questions? Yes, Mr. Otto.
Yeah, so I, I noticed one of the requirements was that you... The, those that apply must have an office within, is it seventy-five miles of the school district?
That's correct.
Okay, and can you tell me the reason for that?
Uh, really going more towards that local aspect, right? So we've learned along the way that those firms that have a local presence just provide better services, right? They're more readily available to oversee their employees who may be taking the deeper dive into our project efforts, so that's really proved beneficial for us a- along the way.
Um, and I was interested in what happens if people apply, um, and are they all interviewed, or is there a way to circumvent that process?
There, every one of the firms is carefully rated and screened. Um, we only push forward with interviews once we develop a shortlist and make final recommendations, yet we have debriefs and offer debriefs for every one of these service providers. So if they propose, take the time and effort and energy to, to want to express interest in doing work with us, yet they're not selected to move forward with an interview or a final selection, we offer ourselves up for debriefs.
Good. And how is it that um the evaluation is done? Do you have a process, and what is that?
Absolutely have a process. We define it for each of these proposers a- as part of the RFQ packet, so in advance, they know which specific categories are going to be ranked and rated on. In most cases, when we collect this many qualifications packages, we do what we call a force rating. So as we review proposal number one, or qualifications package number one, that firm is listed as number one. Once we review the second proposer's qualifications, we can then rerank one and two, and so on and so forth. Um, as we develop these recommended lists, I also describe that we look at having a deep bench yet having enough work to go around. We also carefully consider what that cutoff point is. So once we have our three, if not four, different raters, we look at the scores, summarize the scores, and oftentimes, that process in and of itself kind of screams out to us, here's the cutoff, right? I- it may be that it's an eighty percent rank, right, or a ninety percent rank for a particular rating system, yet that cutoff point is often very clear to us.
Are the evaluations done independently? Uh, how is it done to ensure fairness?
Very independent. Uh, we also have every one of our raters sign a confidentiality statement, uh, just to ensure there's no conflict of interest, and, and we remain transparent in that regard. Um, it is done individually, so we also vary it up in terms of which staff members are doing the ratings. So as you can imagine, with us refreshing this many professional services pools over the course of a three-month stretch or so, that's a lot of work, right? Uh, we're going to get hundreds of qualification statements when all is said and done, so we make sure we mix it up just to not, you know, burn out any particular raider, but we also ensure there's careful consideration and knowledge and technical skill for each of those raters across each of these respective categories. Individual ratings, though.
So commissioning and construction inspection, and the third one, uh, I understand completely, but can you tell us what the labor compliance monitoring services are?
Yes. Uh, so labor compliance services has to do with monitoring and reporting of prevailing wage, uh, compliance with our Community Workforce Development Agreement, and each of the metrics and categories that are outlined, um, reporting out in terms of um local hire percentages. So as we report out, and I report out to the board, um, I'm getting metrics and, and data from our labor compliance providers.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I, I had a chance to look at each of the requests, not, not of the ones that are submitted, but the process for the request for qualifications, and it's a very impressive process. It's a, uh, there's a lot of information, and it seems to be, you bend over backwards, to be fair, so you're going to be congratulated.
Thank you. Really kudos to our contracts team, all of our raters on our side of the house. It, it's really a lot of work.
Thank you.
Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. So you touched on the local hire, uh, commitment. Um, can you also touch on, um, and, um, the importance of providing economic opportunities for local businesses, uh, if and when there are, uh, interactions with local businesses, and, and, um, you know, would, would love to see how we track, uh, that as well, right, since, um, we do want investments to, um, pay back to our local communities and local businesses and, and local workers, uh, for that matter.
Absolutely, and I think I walked right into it when I referenced the Community Workforce Development Agreement. As we know, that's a metric that we look for and track in that regard. Um, it's very defined with respect to our construction activities and the labor force that's out there, you know, the boots on the ground, the specific trades, um, and what that impact is for our community and, and development, right? With these professional services providers, slightly different, right, in many rec- many cases, i- it's, it's the worker itself that we're getting, it's the expertise, the very specific, unique skill set that they bring with respect to pre-designed, pre-construction type activities, yet we're still looking, right? So it was a factor in our rating of each of these statements of qualifications. Uh, these firms all compete at a second layer for particular project-based work, at which point we look and ask them via interviews what they're doing in that regard. So absolutely a factor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Miranda. I don't think we have any further questions, but um, thank you for providing that information.
Thank you.
And Letitia, I'm going to have you do a roll call vote, since we bundled, um, fifteen point four through fifteen point seven.
Sure. Member Benitez?
I vote aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
And student member Aguilar, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes four zero.
Thank you. Uh, now we are at report of board members, so we will start with Axel. Now we are at report of board members, so we will start with Axel.
First of all, I would just like to say thank you Long Beach Unified School District for the opportunity you guys gave to Jordan High School last week. The Radical movie screening was such a successful event that over 400 community members came in support of our screening. It was a great way to show how Jordan has this amazing auditorium and how our students are capable of anything. The thought exchange part of the screening was very meaningful, and it allowed us to see how every student in our district has potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Axel. And was that the event where you had a prominent role in, I mean, you skipped over, you didn't mention that? Can you tell us a little bit about your role in that event?
Yeah, so I was the quote-unquote emcee of that event. So I directed the thought exchange part, and I really got to see more of the insight that the community had on the movie. And it was something that really just touched on how we as students have the potential to do anything if we really put our mind to it, and how we as a district and teachers, staff, and parents, we have to support our students in our endeavors so we can be successful as we dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, I want to give props to Axel. You did an awesome job last week, Axel, so congratulations on that. I also want to recognize, this was a VIP pre-screening. The movie doesn't get released until tomorrow. So big thank you to Mr. David Zaid for bringing this opportunity to Long Beach Unified, and very intentional to make sure that we got as many students, families, community members to be able to attend. So it was pretty much a packed house at Jordan. So Mr. Zaid, to you and the team, thank you for bringing this opportunity to Long Beach as well. And I want to thank all the, all the community members and students that came out to view the film. So I echo your sentiments. The two things I pulled out of the movie Radical were the power of education and the role that each and every one of us has to ensure the success of students, right? So yeah, thank you, Mr. Zaid, for the awesome opportunity that you provided, LBUSD with this. I got a chance to also attend Chavez Elementary School Community Event last week as well, very festive. So I want to thank all the community partners. It was parent-driven. You know, I congratulate Ms. Ocampo, and she said, "I didn't do anything." She said it was really the parents that had literally hundreds of community members, students, out there with games and resources and fun stuff to do. And yes, there were some sweet things that were given out that week as well. So big shout out to, particularly to the organizers and community partners that came together around the Chavez neighborhood. And then a big shout out to TAOB, they had their picnic this past Saturday. So, you know, good food, good community building, and special thanks to all of our TAOB members for everything they do every day for our district. So it was a good chance to hang out. Wasn't too hot, and there was a lot of food, Ms. Craighead. So two things that you like, yeah, two things that you like.
You know me well.
That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate, I feel like you're looking out for me, I really do. Mr. Otto?
Sure. Let me turn my microphone on first, and then I'll be brief. I went, I'm going to be brief because nobody wants to listen to my voice tonight because I don't know what's going on with it. But I was at the Council of Great City Schools Conference in San Diego, and the highlight of that conference was to see Mr. Zaid recognized for having completed years-long training in, well, explain to us what the training was. You've only got 40 minutes.
Sure, it was a urban education leadership and actually aspiring superintendent training.
Only 10 participants selected from across the nation.
And so, you mean, do we have money set aside to, now that he's completed this superintendent training program? We'll have to watch it, but it was very impressive. I knew some of the people who were involved in that program, and I know it was a great program, and so congratulations. There were a number of conferences or sessions at the conference that were very instructive. It's always interesting to see how other school districts handle the questions that they have. We get a little parochial sometimes and think, okay, I've done that before, but, and the interactions with other people there. There were surprisingly few school board members there this year, but it was the most attended conference that they have had in a long, long time. In fact, it was so well-attended that at the meal where the guest speaker was Liz Cheney, they didn't have enough seats for people. And so it was, it was a very educational, good experience. And the Council of Great City Schools is who we are working with in the development of our goals and guardrails and our student outcomes-focused governance. And there were some of that and programs that had to do with that as well. So it was, it was a great conference, but the highlight was seeing you finish that program, so congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, I spent several hours at the Jordan campus last Friday, and I watched the impressive performance between the Jordan football team and Poly, Poly's Jackrabbits. And I have to recognize the bands, the cheer squad, the athletes, the coaches, principals for all of their hard work. I especially want to acknowledge the activities directors who work beyond their work hours. They make sure that these events take place and that our students are safe. And so I want them to know that their work does not go unnoticed. I also attended the famous Mountain Sack Cross Country Invitational on Saturday, and to our, all of our LBSUD, LBUSD runners, you represented our school very, our district very well. And I want to especially send a shout out to Wilson's freshman girls' cross-country team. It was a joy seeing them run and chatting with them after their, after their race. Also, this past weekend, I attended the Lakewood High School football, Division II football championship game. And this game was between Keller and Hoover, and I do want to congratulate my nephew Roberto Licón and the Keller Lobos for their championship win. Felicidades, Lobos, you were outstanding, and we recognize that you are the champs in Division II. Besides sports, I also attended the Sancova Village, and I would like to acknowledge this group once again for their outstanding work. Their work is critical to Black students' success, and we need to continue supporting this group. I was saddened by the stats that they presented. 18 of our schools do not have a Black teacher on staff, and this is quite unacceptable. We need to do better. We need to make sure that our schools have staff members that look like our students. So our Black students need role models, and we need to make sure that all of our schools have Black staff, teachers on campus. I also attended the movie Radical with Eugenio Derbez, and it was a great opportunity for the Latino, Latina, Latinx community to come together. It was such an emotional night, and I do want to acknowledge Axel for being such a great emcee. You are such a gift to Jordan and to LBUSD. And I would hope that we continue to have nights like the one that we had, where we bring together our community. And last but not least, I'd like to send a shout out to the vice principal at Dooley, who sent me a great t-shirt. I cannot wait to wear it. I will be coming over to visit you. And then, look at this. Great work by some students. Thank you, students. I appreciate it. I appreciate the teacher, teachers who help guide this work. Thank you. Gracias.
I also received a beautiful artwork quilt from Dooley, and it looks like the kids were very busy doing that. Let's see. So since our last meeting, I had a chance to visit Gompers. I was there with Lakewood City Council member Jeff Wood. Our principal Linda Reynolds took us on a tour. We toured the campus, and I think one of the highlights was visiting a TK classroom. And so you have to picture the smallest, newest furniture, the smallest, newest little students, and to just to layer the cute upon cute, the lesson they were working on was counting kittens. That, yeah, it was ridiculous. Anyhow, that was a lot of fun. And then also, I wanted to mention that Gompers was recently recognized for their school-wide family engagement efforts by the Cotson Foundation. They were accepted into their, the Cotson Home and School Partnership, and only six schools from the state were accepted into this program. So congratulations, Gompers. That's quite an accomplishment. And it's one of our Lakewood schools. It's a smaller, but very tight-knit community kind of a school, very wonderful. Let's see, also last week, there was an event at Chuen. It was a Halloween event put on by the PTA, and it was a very festive community event with music, games, and fun-for-all. A highlight, and something the principal, Mr. Gonzalez, was very happy to show me, was the new playground equipment. So we have new furniture in our classrooms, new playground equipment, a lot of wonderful celebrations. And then I attended the Milliken Football Game, because football season is very fun. It was homecoming last Friday night. They had a Barbie-themed event. So picture, picture the Milliken Rams coming out of the giant inflatable ram head, and they had pink socks on, and they come through a giant oversized pink banner. And even the activities director dyed his hair pink, so Grant, I hope that comes out soon. If not, he's going to be at Thanksgiving dinner with his pink hair. And then I learned that one of our Rams players, Rams receiver Ryan Pelham, has been awarded the first Under Armour Next All-American, and it's the first time in Milliken's history that they've had a football player recognized by Under Armour in that way. And then also, senior Ryan Pelham will be attending USC, sorry, and playing for them. And I was really excited to find out that he's going to be playing football for USC, but he intends to be a chiropractor. Now, I think that's interesting because...
50% good.
Yeah. I mean, he's in a sport where they probably require a lot of chiropractic help, but, so I think that's ironic, but congratulations to him. And then also, during the homecoming halftime festivities, when they were crowning the queen and king, the queen, the homecoming queen, was another one of our board, a student board representative finalist, Angie DelGaudio. So that was pretty exciting because I thought, well, what are the odds of me actually knowing, you know, the homecoming queen? So it was very exciting because when they announced her name, I thought, oh my gosh, I'm familiar with her. So it's very much a family field, and that's the, that's what I find to be very heartwarming. And in the work that we do, in everything, there's this interconnectedness, and it's a big district, but like the city of Long Beach, it's big, but there's a small field to it. So I appreciate the effort that everybody puts in. I appreciate the effort all of our staff has put in towards our goals and guardrails work. I know that's not easy, and we're demanding, and we don't do this, we don't do this work alone. We really sit on your shoulders. So thank you, everyone. Dr. Baker?
Yes, thank you. I have a number of things both to announce and just affirm that are going on around the district. And I just, I want to start by another congratulations to the teachers that were here to be recognized for gate certification. I just think of all of the different experiences that our teachers engage in to grow the craft of teaching, and just really grateful for, for those who extend themselves into these opportunities. So congratulations to them. Ms. Lopez named Sancova Parent Village, again, continuing attendance of around 100 parents at Sancova Parent Village. And so I'll just announce that the next meeting is on November 15th. It's on our website, and there will be information going out to the community. But if you're listening, November 15th, Sancova Parent Village, a community of care and support for parents and caregivers of Black children. Also coming this Saturday is the High School Choice Summit from 9:00 to 12:00 at Cabrillo High School. This is an amazing opportunity, not just for adults, but for students, to talk to other students like Axel, but from across our entire district, students who can tell the story about their pathways, their career exploration and experiences, clubs, and all of the things that make our school special. So encourage families with their students to go to Cabrillo High School between 9:00 and 12:00. Even if you have a seventh or a sixth grader that just wants to know about what's coming for them, a great opportunity to be engaged. Also, thank you, Axel, for reading the land acknowledgement tonight, a very special part of our meeting, and I don't want that to go unnoticed because we are celebrating Indigenous Peoples, Native American, and Alaskan Native Heritage Month. And so thank you for providing that very special land acknowledgement. And also to name that today and tomorrow are Dia de los Muertos. Many of our schools are having celebrations. I was actually at Cabrillo High School today. They had lots of celebrations going on between things. And the city has a parade on Saturday to celebrate Dia de los Muertos that we want to also support. And then lastly, I want to take a moment. We have a number of students that have been accepted into Youth Leadership Long Beach, an opportunity for them to hone their leadership skills, to get to know the city to a greater degree, and also to represent Long Beach Unified School District. So I'll take a moment to read those who have been accepted, and I understand that there are still some interviews going on, so I may have an update on this in the next meeting. So shout-outs to Kenner Berg from McBride High School, Diana Martinez from Milliken High School, Luke Willett from Long Beach Poly, Kylie Mack from Milliken High School, Jaclyn Gosert from Wilson High School, Maylin Teagle Alarcon from Milliken High School, Jamil Perry from Poly High School, Iksala Aguilar from Cabrillo High School, Andres Landeros from McBride High School, Zoe Watts Bolton from Wilson High School, Antonia Montoya from Browning High School, Shay Parkhill from Milliken High School, Mariana Jimenez from Milliken High School, Stephanie Chow from Milliken High School, Andrea Torres from Wilson High School, and Ahmad Zietzman from Lakewood High School. These are ninth through 12th graders that will be participating in Youth Leadership Long Beach, and just super proud of them for what they will engage in and how they will represent the entire school district. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the business of tonight's meeting. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is November 15th. So without any objection, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.